All right, good evening and welcome to the zoning Board of Appeals regular meeting. It is August 22nd, 2022, and we call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. We'll begin the evening with the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be led by Trustee Green. Please.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on its nation, on your ground, in the visual of liberty and justice.
Yep? Jenna, could we please have a roll call? Dialis.
President.
George.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Hayden with notice. Nival.
Here.
Randazzo.
Here.
Bryce.
Here.
We are looking next item number four for approval of our agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda for Monday, August 22nd, for ZBAs.
Support.
We have a motion on the table by Trustee Dialis, supported by Trustee Randazzo. Any questions or comments at this time? All right, ready for a vote? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, that motion carries six zero. Next up is the approval of the minutes. Our last ZBA board meeting was February 24th, 2020, and we are looking for a motion on those.
Make a motion to approve the zoning ordinance. Do we have support?
Support, Pat, Trustee George, support.
Motion on the table by Trustee Green, supported by Trustee George. Do we have questions or comments at this time?
I don't really know because I wasn't at the meeting and I had no idea what it was about. So I can't figure things out.
Any other questions or comments? All right, are we ready for a vote? Jenna, um, oh no, I'm sorry, just double checking. Making sure I said right. Yep, go ahead.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be voting now too because I wasn't here for this.
I think we're just voting to accept that we're voting for what's in there. Because I wasn't very admitted and then it was never being voted.
And if they're not accepted, then we have a problem. And it's not whether you necessarily agree with the information, it's not or not. It's that you verify that there was a meeting attended. It was recorded by the clerk as they all are and therefore unless there was a question that you had in there, something that's concerning, you would have brought that to Ryan beforehand. So even if like you miss a meeting, you still, according to Robert's rules, would vote on the minutes on that unless, like I said, there was something concerning to you that you would bring to Ryan before.
If boards exist in perpetuity, so that's what the joy is of having a ZBA meeting over a couple of years. So we're just basically voting stating that this meeting took place?
I mean, if you wanted to, you would go back and look at the past meeting and watch the recording and.
Because this was somewhat during COVID, so this would have been video recorded too.
So right, that's what I'm saying.
So there's.
So if that was the case, if there was, if there was something that stood out, you would say, hey, is that, you know, is that correct? Is there a problem? Like I said, you could have gone to Ryan or you could have watched the recording or both of the above, whatever. And not that I'm pressuring you, but the information, you know, that we're proving in the minutes is the meeting took place, there were secret, so secretary had recorded them, you know, this was the attendance of them. And it is obvious that you were not in attendance by the list of who is available that evening. So that is pretty standard practice in Robert's rules. But you are able to, again, decide as you choose. Are we ready for a vote? Any other questions? All right, all in favor? Opposed? All right, thank you, that motion carries six zero. Item number six is the unfinished business, of which we have none this evening, which, what's that?
That's good.
After a year and a half. No, really. Which brings us to our new business, and our first item is 189 Ball Street, a home occupation consideration and approval, and we'll send that over to Manager Mattis to begin, please.
Yeah, your package contains information about a business occupancy application received from the resident of 189 Ball Street, who's in attendance, Mr. Salisbury. He is interested in opening a home business. 189 Ball Street, you'll notice on the zoning map, is zoned residential, which, you know, business doesn't exactly fit in the acceptable uses in the residential district, which requires a zoning Board of Appeal approval per the zoning ordinance, section 2.423, for a home occupation. So for your consideration, we bring this to the ZBA. And there's a couple outcomes that are possible after discussion. The ZBA can just flat out say no, can say yes, yes with conditions, yes with recommendations. So conditions could be other approval processes, recommendations could be sent into the Planning Commission for their review, or ZBA is going to give this entirely to the Planning Commission for review. So there's a couple different ways it could go. So keep that in mind as we, as we discuss, but yeah, for your consideration.
Can I ask why it didn't go to Planning Commission?
That is correct.
I know, but I'm asking why? Do we know why it didn't?
The zoning ordinance says ZBA consideration and approval of a particular review shall be required in order to establish a home occupation. No ordinance does it say Planning Commission or process there.
Okay.
Which is why it's to you.
I think it would be an idea to have the Planning Commission be like.
So I think if we don't mind, Ryan kind of laid the format. I would like to hear from the permit or have them step forward and kind of give a background, and then we're able to ask the promoter questions, and then when he sits down, we can kind of have our discussion, does that work for us?
Yeah.
So if you don't mind, could you please step forward and just quickly state your name for us and give us a little more background to your petition?
Sure, my name is Justin Salisbury. I have a federal firearms license. I've had it since 2013. It is currently registered in an address over on Glass Road in the township. I'm wanting to transfer my license over to my current residence. Unfortunately, I need your guys' blessing for the ATF to approve the transfer of that license to the new address. Now, just like to put on record, I have zero foot traffic. I have no shipments that come to my home. When the item shipped through FedEx, I have them put on hold, I pick them up at FedEx. Most of my items through my business are drop shipped right to my customers. Items that are required to come to my home and me ship out, again, they ship to FedEx, I go pick them up, I bring them home, I re-box them, I mail them out. I have little to no foot traffic, and the only foot traffic I would say that I have is an item that a family or a friend would purchase from me, and those are people that are at my house regularly anyways.
So what you are looking for is an approval because of the process?
Yes, it is, it is required by the ATF to, in areas that don't already have it in their ordinances, that home-based businesses are approved, you have to go through a process of getting an approval from whatever city or village you reside in.
So is there any other information we have to ask? Or would you like to open it to us for questions?
You can, any questions?
So no ammo?
No. The only ammo I have is what I personally own.
But I mean, in the sales.
No, I don't believe it's safe to store that type of ammo in a residential area.
Right, that's my.
So no, there would be no ammo whatsoever.
And then did you have to get an ordinance for Glass Road?
Yes, I had to get a special use permit from the township. This license, I've been business since 2013.
Justin, you're tackling this charging of firearms for testing or anything like that at your premises, correct?
No, law states that I wouldn't be able to do that in the village just because of the proximity of the home, so. Yep, yep, any testing that does get done, either gets done at a licensed range, most of the time I use the one Thorntonville rec area out here, so, but no, no discharging here in the village.
So can you tell us about the ATF's process and oversight?
So their oversight, pretty much, they can drop in at any time and do an inspection. They don't have to give me any notice. On my license on file with them, I have to give them available business hours, and during those hours, they don't have to announce, call, they can just stop by and do a full inspection of all of my records, making sure everything is properly stored and whatnot.
How many sales do you have through? And then it says you have foot traffic.
Of what, are we talking about firearms specifically?
Or accessories, so you do clips and whatnot as well?
Um, probably 50 to 60 a month, and I'd say nine out of 10 items are drop shipped from the, my warehouse.
You did mention the, our, well, let me clarify. You mentioned that you do go to FedEx to make the change. Do you have deliveries received at the home, FedEx, UPS, US Mail, anything like that?
No, nothing related to the business, everything is held at the shipper's location and I pick it up.
I just wanted to clarify because you said no extra foot traffic, I want to be sure that those deliveries are.
Yep, no, everything is picked up at the carrier.
Justin, with that being said, is that an ATF rule or is that something that you and your wife decided would be best?
That is something I do because I also work a day job, so I'm not home when FedEx and all of them typically deliver. So as soon as I get the tracking number, I contact the carrier and have the package put on hold.
So this is something you guys foresee, it's a safety issue and you want to make sure that that's protected?
Well, because I'm not home, these, when a firearm is shipped, they are shipped with a 21 and older restricted signature requirement. So with nobody being home, they're not going to be able to deliver it anyway, so for the sake of having the carrier make multiple attempts to deliver it, I just have it held and then I pick it up.
Has there been, has there been any change with your process interaction with the ATF since the 2013 original application? Was your application any different after the move?
No.
You said permit.
Yep, it's the same permit, it's just we're looking to change the premise address of it.
And how long is your, I'm sorry, do you call it a license or a permit?
It is a license.
So how long is that license good?
These firearms licenses expire every three years, we have to renew them.
So you would come back to us in three years and you're still here?
Unless you grant it as a non-expiring permit for this business at that address, then when it comes time for renewal, I'll just submit my renewal and they'll approve it.
My, my, one condition I'd like to see is that you produce the permit, once the first, you know, once this one expires, you present the next one, that it's still good to the ATF.
Okay, and I do have a copy of my current one, if you guys would.
Did the ATF give you a timeframe, if you receive approval, as to when their approval process will be finished?
If you guys give the approval, I'll submit the paperwork and they'll have it done in about two weeks.
Justin.
Yes.
From a local law enforcement standpoint, have you, with the sheriff's department here, are they aware that you're applying for this permit down?
Yes, I do have to notify them with any changes of address to the business. That way, if they have to respond to any type of emergency call to the residents, they're aware of what's going on.
And they would, you would also grant them similar permissions to access to that?
They, they don't have any inspection power as far as the business goes, that's all specifically with the ATF. Yep, the ATF and FBI because they're the licensing agent.
And this, this license here, if I read it right, expires on October, around October this year, so when would you get your, when would the license be?
It will be getting renewed in approximately two weeks at the address that it's currently at.
So you'd be able to show us that at our next meeting?
The license?
Is that when expires, October of this year?
Yeah, so I would need approval from you guys to be able to, before I could transfer it to this address, and then I could provide you with a current copy of the.
Oh, so that October 22 date would go away?
Yep, and then they would issue me a new one.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then the new one would expire in October of 25.
Okay, and you did say.
No problem.
Ryan, what do you see would be the reason you submitted to land use? Just so we know.
For the master plan, make sure that things are as they should be?
Most land use things do start with Planning Commission. Our zoning ordinance, as we know, is lacking in several areas, this being one of hundreds. So I think an updated process would include it goes to the Planning Commission first for review and recommendation and then to the ZBA, but because we don't have that anywhere, that's been part of our delay. We've been, we've been talking about this for a while, and between figuring out our process, working with our attorney, just talking through, does this process look like? What do other places do, speaking with the township and other municipalities with similar, you know, businesses and homes and stuff like that, it's, we don't have a great process, so.
And obviously it's going to be more costly if it has to go to the Planning Commission to feel Mr. Salisbury.
In what way?
To apply for it?
No, because our fees are already set.
Okay.
And because we don't technically have the Planning Commission in our stated required process, there would be no extra fee or anything, it would just be more time.
And then the Planning Commission meets?
September 6th, the first Tuesday of the month.
September 6th.
Yeah, is the next one.
Would that work within your parameters?
Whatever you, you guys dictate is what I'll have to go with.
You've been extreme of vision, right?
Yes.
The zoning Board of Appeals is the council. Goes to the Planning Commission, will come right back to us any minute.
Hinging on what we decide.
Sure.
We could have it pending their decision, and we could already have made our decision.
Yeah, I still see the reason for it to go to Planning Commission because we're not changing the zoning of the whole area, we're just giving an exemption for one property. If I can piggyback on, on his response just now on Keith's, I don't think we should hold Mr. Salisbury's feet to the fire per se because our ordinances aren't correct. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the business occupancy, occupancy application for Justin Salisbury at 189 Ball Street, with the condition that once you get the license that you send us, get us a copy of it.
Absolutely. Yep.
Hold on, hold on, please, one more. We have a motion on the table by Trustee Randazzo and supported by Trustee Dialis. Questions or comments? Kate, please.
Just a comment, I do think it's important to include our planning commission. I don't want to hold it up either, but if it were set up the way it should be, it should have went there first and filtered up to us, and then we could have just, you know, approved it, but I think if we put a contingency that if they find no fault with it, it would be automatically granted, like you say, so he doesn't have to come back to us. That's.
I just have, I have one more question.
Anyone else?
We have, we do have a distinguished member of the Planning Commission here, perhaps he could shed any light on it.
It's not open to public comment yet, but Pat, did you have anything else?
I'm just a bolt.
Okay, I don't mind, I'm just double before we head out.
I just, I just saw some weight in one of that actually.
Did you have any extra commentary, Dan?
No, I would like to see it go to Planning Commission, just that we start doing the process correctly, but I would also want to put as requirements that every three years, that the new permit that we get on file through the office and that there's no ammo, and also that the packages are picked up at, if that's what you're doing currently, right?
Yep, that's currently what we're doing.
But I'm just saying my comment.
No, I agree with. Kate, did you have anything else? Okay, Tony, you have something else, Dan?
Justin, is your wife going to be listed on this too, or is she, I mean, the people that are listed on here, are they the only people that can pick up from FedEx or that's on the license?
I'm the only one that can pick up from FedEx.
Okay, so her name on here doesn't matter?
Nope.
I can amend my motion to include.
That's totally.
No, 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 to include what?
Tony, if you don't mind, I have a couple of thoughts too.
Oh, sure.
I don't mind, and then I would like Bob to speak before we actually vote, so if you just don't mind.
No, no problem.
And then keep that thought. I agree with Melanie as well, and Kate, I believe it should go to planning. I think it can be contingent on planning's decision on that date, so we don't have to meet again. And once they have made a decision, if we choose to pass it to them, that's where it stops. The other thing I would love, personally, to see it contingent on is the ATF approval. If ATF does not approve it, then he does not receive that zoning change, and it stops there. And then, you know, we don't have to meet again to say, hey, we changed our mind because it didn't pass, blah, blah, blah. So those are the two contingencies I would like to see. The other thing is, just a clarification, nothing is wrong with our ordinance and nothing necessarily will change with our ordinance, these are opinions that we have based on, we're in the middle of changing ordinances, so I just wanted to on record that our ordinance stands as is, that's why it's coming to zoning, is we feel there might be some fluidity to look at. With that, Bob, could you please share anything you'd like to, before we kind of look at our decisions?
Some of this is definitely my fault. Back when this come up some time ago, we had a discussion on it, and it seemed, this before we were really working on the ordinance and the zoning, and it seemed pretty darn minor of what needed to be done. And I get that sometime while I was in New Hampshire and I looked at the emails that come through, and it's like, why in the world did I even have that discussion with Ryan that it was okay? But with that said, I think your plan is, would work for us, which would be good for the Planning Commission. It didn't cast them out of the picture entirely. If I understand it correctly, you're looking at making a motion to approve it with the review of the Planning Commission, so in the event we came up with some issue on it, we could actually send it back, but is that the under?
That was just my request, that isn't the official motion.
Right, and I think that would be appropriate because I'm going to have to answer to planning commissioners already, because this, this should have went to us, and it was a discussion that we had, and it's one of those issues, but I would hope in the future that, and it sounds like that's the discussion here, that anything that ever needs to come to the ZBA should come to the Planning Commission, no matter how minor it is, it should come there. We get little business and we're expected to be expertise on these things, and we get very little business to do. And even though this is a minor, it will make us look at the zoning and ensure that it's actually, in fact, what it, what it's supposed to be, which I'm sure it is, but no, with that, I, I think that would be sufficient, like it'll get me off the hook with the Planning Commission, besides make things a little easier for, for holding him up so long too, so. With that said.
The other thing I did want to mention, that I'm sorry, I wrote a note and forgot to mention, we also have to keep in mind those ZBA is case by case. We also are neutral and unbiased, so whether you have a Tupperware home-based business or an insurance-based business or a firearms-based business in front of you, you have to look at the business model compared to the ordinance, not what our personal opinion may or may not be, and I'm not saying we are, I'm just keeping that reminder out there.
Almost four years, we've had ZBA issues before. Does every single issue that goes to ZBA, does it have to be cleared by Planning Commission? I'm thinking like fences and things like that, though, it seems to be pretty common.
Well, as we've kind of learned, it's a courteous, it is at this point an antiquated ordinance that needs to be looked at, whether it's changed or not, I think is planning's decision to make, but if we make assumptions around them, they surely won't know where issues are or not, or how it best fits for their vision.
Because I'm just thinking from a historical standpoint, if we had ZBA issues in the past, just even the past three, four years, that did not have to go through Planning Commission, or did, or did not.
It did go to planning, planning sent it back to us, if you remember correctly.
On this one?
The fence. Yep, we did, they sent it, they reviewed it, they sent it back.
Yeah, that's right, okay.
But like I said, just that, ensuring that communication is, I know, important to both of our boards.
Because otherwise we could let Justin slide under the door in the future. Jump through the hoops.
Is there any other thought or questions before we get back to motion? All right, so Tony, you have thought or are you good, or where are we at with your motion?
Huh? Yeah, I forgot what I said.
Are you, okay, I was going to say.
Sure, I recorded to approve the business occupancy application for Justin Salisbury at 189 Ball Street with the condition that he provides a copy of the license to the village once he receives it to verify it's up to date every three years.
And I'd also like to amend it, this list that shipments be picked up at FedEx and on the condition that Justin receives the ATF approval, which really I think is, if he gets the license updated, so.
But don't you have to have our approval before?
Once I get your approval, approval, it's just a formality of them changing the address.
Correct. But if, if. No, we are allowing it unless something happens and they deny it, he can't go around and say, I have that approved, you know. Tony, it's up to you, do you want an off-site delivery or do you want FedEx? What happens if FedEx?
Oh, yeah, off-site would, off-site would be fine.
Something, however you want to.
Just in case it changes in the future. Yes, he can change FedEx to off-site.
Condition I'm going to the Planning Commission or?
Well, he's amending, that's why I'm asking.
No, because it's, no, I think things, from this point forward, I would suggest so, but this clearly fell through, and now we're going to push him a couple more weeks out, and I'm assuming he can't do any business until this happens right after now, so it's not fair to him.
You guys were asking for this.
I was very slow in this.
It took approximately six weeks just to get the application. I had reached out to Jenna to finally get it, and then we submitted it, and then there were some other delays with speaking to the village attorneys and whatnot, and then here we are.
September, by the time we get it back, it's going to be September, end of September.
Well, September 6th, the Planning Committee, if they approve it, then you would be done.
If I put the conditional.
Right. So just, just keep in mind, hold on real quick, it's, it is Tony's motion, but before we clarify and you get to decide to second it or not, Jenna had a question for Tony?
Are we just adding to the end of it that shipments are picked up off-site?
Yeah, that the FedEx part just be changed to off-site, just in case his shipping changes in the future.
And any ATF approval?
Yeah, with the no ammunition being sold, you have that on there? Yeah, no ammunition sales.
Keith, do you need a rebuttal to decide whether you support it? Questions or comments before we vote? Do we need it read back? What would you like? Okay, we'll read it back, then we'll vote.
To approve the business occupancy application for Justin Salisbury at 189 Ball Street, with the condition that he provides a copy of the license to the village once he receives it to verify it's up to date every three years. Shipments are picked up off-site and pending ATF approval, no ammunition sales.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Keith, ready for vote? All right, um, can we have a roll call vote, please, Jenna? Dialis?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Green?
No.
Nivell?
Yeah.
Randazzo?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
That motion carries four-two. Thank you very much. All right, we are ready to adjourn. Can I have a motion, please? Support? Thank you. We have a motion on the table by trustee Green, supported by trustee Nivell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That motion carries six-zero, and it is seven-oh-one. Meeting is adjourned. Village Council regular meeting. It is Monday, August 22nd, at 7:00 PM. And 7:05, we call this meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll have trustee Nivell, please.
My pledge of allegiance. Jim of the United States of America, to the right, for the sustenance, on a nation, underground, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jenna, can we please have a vote? Dialis?
Brother.
George?
Yes, here.
Here.
Hayden? With notice? Nivell?
Here.
Randazzo?
Here.
Bryce? Here. Thank you. Item number four this evening is the approval of our agenda.
Motion to approve our agenda.
We have a motion on the table by trustee Green, supported by trustee Nivell. Do we have questions or comments at this time? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero. Next up this evening is the regular meeting minutes of July 25th, 2022. We're looking for an approval.
Make the motion for the Monday, July 25th, Village Council regular meeting minutes to accept them.
We have a motion on the table by trustee Nivell, and it's supported by trustee Green. Do we have any questions or comments at this time? All right, there are none. We're ready for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That motion carries six-zero. The acceptance items for this evening's packet is the finance report from the village treasurer for the month of July. It also includes the revenue, revenue and expenditure report from the village treasurer for the month of July as well. That leads us to the disbursements ending August 15th, 2022. That will be item number seven. Looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve our disbursements, um, dated 7/16/22 to 8/15/22 in the amount of $18,171.
Support.
Wait a second. Is that 171 or 71? Okay, it says 71 on the agenda. Any questions or comments at this time? Oh, sorry, we have a, we don't have support. Who?
Oh, oh.
Do you have Pat? Yes, okay. I was still stuck on that 100 over there. Okay. Sorry, we have a motion on the table by trustee Green, supported by trustee George. Do we have questions or comments? I just looked at it. All right, um, can we please have a roll call vote on that, Jenna? Dialis?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Nivell?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
That motion carries six-zero. Thank you very much. Item number eight this evening is our public comment. Please remember, at this time, it's on agenda items only. Later in the agenda, we do have a space for non-agenda items. Please go ahead and, um, remember, you kind of stand up, raise your hand, come to the podium, whatever you're comfortable with. Um, you do have a three-minute limit, and we would love for you to introduce yourself if you would like, so just kind of let us know who'd like to speak this evening.
Bob MacArthur, Chairman of the Planning Commission. The, I just want to go back over about the issue about getting issues back to the Planning Commission prior to moving on to, uh, we spent a lot of time developing your master plan. We spent a lot of time developing your, uh, long-term budget, a lot of time working on the RRC requirements. Uh, and that's been charged to the Planning Commission, and we have worked on it. We have committee members working on every single one of those. And I see several items on here that you're working on and looking at, and the Planning Commission is unaware of them, uh, to some extent. I guess that some of us members are aware of, of a little bit about electrical vehicles, and where are you going to put them? Uh, you know, are you meeting our master plan, uh, the same way with the marijuana ordinance? Uh, the Planning Commission has not had a chance, although we understand you can't change that, but it's never been reviewed by the Planning Commission, uh, like we would any other ordinance. So just to keep that in mind as you go, I, the land survey, I, I'm guessing what that is, but I, uh, you know, is the Planning Commission going to get an opportunity to review that? Because we are the ones that are going to end up having to, to look at these plans as they come in and ensure that they're meeting all these requirements, which is fine. It's, uh, but, uh, again, back to, the Planning Commission has not had a ton of experience on doing all these issues, and you can't, you should not be keeping a lot of these maybe minor items away from the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Please, do you want to stand where you're at? Come to the podium, whatever you choose, whatever you're comfortable with.
I take up too much of your time, but I am Kristin Watt, and I am making a quick visit down here in Ortonville today. Um, I am running for county commissioner, um, in the new district, seven, which will include Ortonville and Brandon Township. So, um, I just wanted to stop in here. I've had a chance to meet Ryan and some of you, um, and your business owners, just as I've been a patron of Ortonville. Um, and I'm really jealous because you're getting revived sips and sweets down here, and it used to be in Holly where I live, and I miss bubble tea. So, um, I just wanted to take a few moments and introduce myself. Um, I left some literature with Ryan for each of you. It has my cell phone and my email, if there's any questions. Um, and I will leave an extra one for the public because it has a QR code, so if you would like to scan it and see what I'm about on my Facebook page, it's there. Um, but I just wanted to, um, take the opportunity to kind of just let you guys know. Um, I'm a public servant. I'm on the Holly Township Library Board. I am a precinct delegate in Holly Second Precinct, and I'm quite active in Rose Township and Springfield as well. Um, before any, uh, I know politics gets divisive. I'm not a politician. I'm just a community advocate who was asked to run. Um, and I just wanted to let the citizens of your village know. Since I live in a village too, I understand, um, just like, I love living in Holly. I love coming out to towns like this, because regardless of what we agree or disagree on, I just really feel like everybody wants to pitch in and help and serve their community, and that's really why I'm running. Uh, Mr. Hoffman, who would be my opponent, um, who I know has come to visit, um, he actually did the ribbon cutting for my business. I'm a small business owner. We don't have any bad blood between us. Um, it's just fresh ideas, fresh perspective, and I'm really, uh, concerned after this pandemic of, um, the economic recovery. As a small business owner, I have lived through starting a business after COVID, and that's a whole other thing with the county budget. And, um, what I like to really, as I've been talking to people across the district, I really feel like we all maybe can understand this. There's a lot of blind spots, a lot. And I think that, uh, there's just working families and veterans and seniors and stuff that are just getting left in the middle, and we're not really getting represented correctly, uh, in our communities out here. I feel like North Oakland, we're like an appendage, like we don't fit in with the rest of the county. And so there are unique needs. And, uh, so anyway, that's why I'm running, and I just wanted to show my face and let you know who I am and why I'm running. And, um, I appreciate you giving me a few moments tonight to talk about that. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. I'll leave you an extra one. I'm off to another meeting. I do care about what's going on. Appreciate it, thank you. I'll be back soon. Do you have any other public comments and agenda items at this time? All right, thank you. Keep in mind, later on in the agenda, there will be a space for non-agenda items, and we'd love to hear from you. Next up is the approval of our consent agenda. This evening, it contains the Charter Championship of Brandon Board from June 6th, the Ortonville DDA from July 18th, the Wayfinding Committee from July 19th, the Historical Society from July 12th, and the Minutes of Parks and Rec from August 3rd. It also contains the proclamation for the National Recovery Month, September 2022, and the proclamation for the National Suicide Prevention Month, which is also September of 2022. We are looking for a motion on the consent agenda at this time.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
We have a motion on the table by trustee Green, supported by trustee Randazzo. Do we have questions or comments at this time?
I just have one comment on the Historical Society. I wanted to thank Pat George. Um, I understand you're donating, um, to help get something for our Historical Society, so.
I did.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I appreciate that. I figure you can go into detail when you cover your.
With the rest of the story, yeah?
Yeah, with the rest of the story, yeah.
Do we have any questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right, we're ready for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero. Next up is the item from the trustees, and we will start with updates, um, with Keith Dialis, please. Wonderful. That leads us to, Pat, please.
Uh, yep, from a Historical Society standpoint, um, things here. We had our, uh, annual picnic on, uh, Tuesday. We had it right outside the blacksmith shop. It was well-attended. We probably had a couple dozen people there. And that was fun. Um, main discussion points, because that was a meeting night, so the meeting followed. Uh, the crew was very excited about September Fest, because the, uh, pie eating contest has been reinstated in its original format, and, uh, that's for the kids and for the, I'll assume the grownups. Uh, the pie baking contest now is reasonable this year, so everybody's looking forward to that. Um, uh, also regarding September Fest, uh, Blacksmith Shop has invited in, I think they, they call it, uh, he calls it a hammer, Tom calls it a hammer-in, and that's two words. And basically, in simple terms, what that is, is he's invited blacksmiths from out of town, and whatever that means statewide, maybe even some people coming across state lines, uh, to demonstrate at September Fest their blacksmithing, uh, abilities and specialties and things like that. So that should be something, and they'll be there both Saturday and Sunday.
Where are they staying?
Um, well, they're, they're staying either at their own accommodations, or, uh, I believe they're, if, uh, they've been invited to, to stay at the, uh, on the property there, above the side of Blacksmith's House.
Oh, like up at the?
That's the plan, yes.
So they're tenting?
They're tenting, yes. They're tenting, and, and hopefully, there'll be some porta-johns still operational during the evening that they can go and use. Yeah, so that's it. So anyway, big, oh, I got one more thing that's, that's big, the, um, and, and Ryan was, was, was big on this. You know, it's been, uh, a, a long, long time on, on this darn museum, uh, schoolhouse painting project. The good news is, is that Ryan talked to Bob Huxwall and the crew, and, uh, typically, they said, we can, we can get a start on this. So rather than be at ground zero for, you know, year three and a half, Bob and the crew will, will approach this very carefully. Um, they have encountered more problems, uh, at this point, just on the one wall they're working on. They're going to take it one wall at a time. They've uncovered more problems on this one wall than, than probably they should in the whole project. So it's slow, but at least we've got something started, and I want to thank Ryan for, for getting that going.
You should thank Bob and the D W crew.
Yes, they are, yeah. That's it for me.
Hey, did you want to share any, um, more details on what the Blacksmith Shop has acquired? What they acquired from Clarkston?
Well, I have a picture. I, I don't know what this is, but I know this much. It's, um, I, I call it swag, you know, S-W-A-G, and it says, if it's got swag, that's good. So this block's got some swag to it. There's a picture of it in the paper. Anywho, uh, Tom, uh, needed, needed some cash for it and was, was a little bit shorthanded, so I, uh, I had money left over from, uh, over the barn purchase, for, for example, things like that, so. Yeah, so I just helped out.
Want to give a little brief history, or do you not want to give away their little prize? Where it came from, how, how it was found?
Well, it was down in Clarkston, I know that, and, and, uh, again, I, I, the blacksmiths know what this is. I look at it, and it, to me, it would be like a square bat, Ryan. I don't know what's up with that. But it, that's exciting to them, and I guess it's cool to have it, you know, so.
So it was found on a property in Clarkston, so it's a local find from a historical blacksmith in the area.
And you use it to shape iron.
Yeah, various things like that.
Do you want to check it out?
For all that info, Ben.
Should I just pass the picture? Should I just pass the? You're going to look at this and go, are you kidding me?
The mill is open, the mill's open every Saturday from 10 to 2.
Yeah, it's on the swing, yeah. So it's, it's a swag, that's.
Hammer in different shapes.
Yeah, first shaping iron.
Although I think the hammer-in is for the personnel.
All right, did you have anything else for us?
No, I really don't. I, I got, I got more than that.
Okay, would you like to share?
The Personnel Committee or the Fire Board has not met this past month. Um, I suspect going forward, we will. Vacations, I think, are, are winding down, so we'll be back at it. Um, the only other thing I had, I, I'm interested, if anybody knows, how September Fest is going on for two days? And by that, I mean, our part in it as far as, um, the car awards, uh, the beautification award for the year, that, are we going to do that all just on Saturday? Are we going to do it Sunday? Do we know when we're going to do it?
So I'll stop you real quick, because you're going to go ahead and give updates, and then when Rock gives updates, if you had questions, if you don't mind then asking, that would be fabulous.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
That's all? We appreciate it. Thank you. All right, Larry's not here. Did you want to jump in in his space, or wait till your turn to update?
Um, I can speak to, uh, IT has not met, but will be shortly. There's an IT-related item on the agenda. We'll talk more about that when we get there, about emails. Uh, and there's some website conversations happening. Uh, IT will, will meet in the next couple of weeks to talk about that. Um, no SEMCOG update at this time. The next general assembly is in October, uh, but there's a couple task force meetings in the meantime, and lots of training opportunities. If you're interested, you should definitely get there and attend. There's all kinds of stuff.
All right, excellent. That leads us to Melanie, please.
Okay, uh, the Wayfinding will be presented in the next, uh, Village Council meeting in September. So the signs, and we will ask the other.
So the signs, and we will ask the other entities to come, so just by the media. And Heritage Garden just received a bridge builder grant. It's a smaller grant that MML was offering up for $500, and I had applied for the lights or for some landscaping. And we made it to the semifinals, so now voting is going on. You can vote every day, once a day. And I believe I sent an email out to everybody today, so please share it on social media, and whomever, and vote as much as you can. I guess that goes into the selection of who gets the grant.
That's what I shared with the three successive boards. They'll all share it out later.
I put everyone on it today, but I know I reached out to, I guess Matt, Matt is out of town. I reached out to him, so then I copied Courtney, and we haven't touched base yet. So I was going to see if DDA could help spread the word on social media for it as well. And then our Planning Commission, as you know, we're working on the ordinances, and we will meet again on the 6th, I believe, right? September 6th.
Thanks, ma'am. Appreciate it, thank you. Tony, please.
Real quick, just to follow up with Melanie about that survey. I went ahead and I blasted it to all the Ortonville sites I could see. And you can vote twice in one day if you use a different browser. Okay, so, okay, so I'm gonna start out with the trail meeting. There is a meeting on the 27th at 4:00 p.m., which was a walkthrough. And then there was supposed to be a meeting in Village Hall, but the only ones that showed up were me and Ryan. The others stayed behind and did some clearing. I don't have another date set up yet for another trail meeting. But from what Ryan was telling me, everything went really good. Okay, beautification awards that Kay had mentioned, Wednesday the 3rd. Kay, Ryan, and I discussed the beautification awards for the homes located in the Village Limits. I invited Kay there, so she'd give me her input, because she was, she's when it started this, when she was on the Parks and Rec last year. On August 6th, I drove around the village, and I wrote down 38 homes that I felt was, I felt were worthy of an award. Unfortunately, I can only give out three homes at a time. I did choose Ford Church, 186 Ball Street, 110 James Street. I left the names in, out of these, because we have not actually discussed it with the owners, if they want their name or even their pictures of their homes put in the paper. So if they can get back with myself or Ryan, it would be great. And also on the 16th, I actually delivered the yard signs to those three homes. September Fest, August 9th, we held a meeting. We're gonna talk about it in a second with the special event permit. But we did meet myself, Fred, Ted Davis from CERT, Ryan, and Ken Hardwig. We also had another meeting at 1:30 that day at the Hall. I mean, at the library, and that was actually the September Fest meeting. Lieutenant Glover, I asked him if they would be able to block off South Street. Again, this is stuff they'll bring, brought up in the permit, but he stated he would, you know, try to work on something for that. And the next September Fest meeting, Fred just called it out to be on an individual basis as needed. I'm kind of against that, because like Kay mentioned, this is a two-day event, and I don't think an individual meeting should be. I think we need a group meeting, because it's gonna be two days. So I will touch base with Fred on that, and because this falls under the Parks and Rec, and this is information I just got today. Our outdoor movies for 2022, we were supposed to have one the last two weekends, but weather kept us from doing that. So the decision was made that we're not going to do any more outdoor movies for this year, and that due to sponsorship, the last indoor movie will be September 24th, unless we can find sponsors to cover those. If anybody is looking to sponsor that, they can contact myself through the Brandon Parks and Rec. I think that's about it.
Just understanding the concern I can talk about. Everything's supposed to take place, everything's supposed to be available.
Yep.
All days, all day, you know, or what?
That's one thing that wasn't, it was more pertaining to Saturday, because that's the big day, and then Sunday is kind of just.
The car show is just Saturday?
Yeah, the car show is just Saturday.
That answers that question.
And we're, like I said, the.
Are we doing it the same as last year, just so I know, or no? The car show?
If you ladies will let me get with Fred, and.
Just let me know where guys.
Both of you know.
Yeah, that way I know not to.
So if they would like Village Council to do the judging, they'll contact us through email, and we can reply for availability.
Yep, and like I said, the 24th, which is September Fest, that Saturday night, we're doing the last indoor movie here again, unless we have a sponsor that can run the rest of them, so. And I'll send that info to, update that.
Anything else at this time?
No, ma'am.
No.
So with DDA, a couple of updates. We had our barbecue takeover food trucks. The evening was awesome turnout, wonderful volunteers that were available. We thank you very much. And the feedback was good from the community members, so we always like to see that. It's always interesting to kind of see where people are coming from and hear, and like, you know, how we draw people in from outside to check us out, so that's always nice. Farmers Market continues to plug away on Saturdays. Remember, they are there from 9 to 2. And DDA continues with a checklist of projects that they're working on for the 22, 23 year, and they continually to progress and update those at our meetings. So look forward to some things that you'll notice in the minutes and projects that are up and coming. Did I miss anything? I know. That's why I asked. That's all I got, so, all right. Anybody forget anything, something?
I'll send for our RC, you received a training survey via email via, from Elizabeth Ping, our RC planner. You've got something at the end of the week to do, and goes for council and DDA and planning commission. Help us figure out our training strategy going forward. Say, here's what I want to say in the manager's report.
Perfect, thank you.
And I bumped it today. Everybody sent it to you today.
It takes like 30 seconds.
We've already done, yeah. We've had a pretty good response so far, so not to shame anyone, but the more the better.
Yeah.
And it says whether you did it or not, so, no pressure. All right, next up is our unfinished business. This evening, we'll start out with a special event permit for the Ortonville 5K Run Lock, which would be September 25th. And who wants to start the, who's gonna lead on that one? Tony?
Okay, so again, Fred, Waybrand, the director for Parks and Rec, Ken Hardwig, Ryan, myself, and Ted Davis all met here to discuss the special event permit. As you know, at our last meeting, I asked everybody to hold out so we can get the time adjusted. During that discussion, you know, obviously, one council person cannot talk for everybody, but we did come up to a consensus that maybe 8:30 would be a lot better, the starting time, and the end time would be 9:30. And I, I'm almost positive these hours are the start and the end, has nothing to do with the cleanup, right? So the race will start at 8:30. There's gonna be a change, which is on the backside. The only change really is that it's going down, straight down South Street to Mill Street for two reasons. The biggest one is Davis Alley is, it's not a very good route because of the blacktop and uneven surface. Second thing is, South Street from Church up the mill is already gonna be blocked because we have the vendors there. Ken mentioned that good runners will finish this by 9 o'clock. The walkers, we're not really concerned about, because as they come back down South Street between the vendors, they can just mill around everybody. It's, they're not like in a race. So we all felt very good about that, and so that's what we decided on. The race will start at 8:30, the race time will end at 9:30. As far as the cleanup goes, they'll take care of the cleanup at the school. And also here, normally CERT's requested at these types of events. We are gonna be at the September Fest, so we're already gonna be there. And so if need be, we'll assist where we can. Other than that, I don't think I missed anything else. Pretty much, I guess I'm just gonna make a motion to approve the special event permit for the Ortonville 5K Run Lock, September 25th, 2022, from 8:30 a.m. to 9:30.
Motion on the table by trustee Rendazo, supported by trustee Nibel. Questions or comments at this time? My question just was, I see that the sheriff and chief are on the letter. I just want to ensure that the letter came with the permit when you signed the permit. Okay, wasn't after the fact, and answering that question.
Yep, Mr. Hardwig, who's back there somewhere.
Right.
Did a very good job of answering all of our questions and working with each group when we met, addressing each concern and making sure there were agreeable compromises where needed. But safety was of the utmost concern and addressed very clearly, so.
I just didn't see a date. I saw who it was to, but I want to make sure it came before you signed. Perfect.
I noticed on the signs that they had put them on hold to join up.
I was gonna bring that up after the vote, but if approved, when are you guys gonna remove those old signs?
I will apply the signs tomorrow.
Okay.
To the start time of the week.
Okay, and on your website?
Take off the holes, and I'll replace it with another style of system. So the registration will be.
And you guys will change the website, so.
Any other questions or comments before we go? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That motion carries six zero. Next up this evening, oh, what's it?
Thank you, Ellen.
Yeah, thanks, Ellen.
Next up is our new business, and we will begin with the presentation for the Ortonville DDA National Accreditation with Main Street Oakland County. Who wants to start with that?
So good evening, everyone. Y'all know me, Courtney McLaren, president of the DDA. Unfortunately, Matt Jenkins couldn't be with us this evening. He's on a beach somewhere, really warm in North Carolina, I believe. But anyways, so I will just take a moment to introduce our Main Street Oakland County liaison, Tim Kolbeck, for those who don't already know him. So he's here this evening to present us with our accreditation. So I'll let him say a few words, and we'll come up for our photo op, and then. That'll do it. Perfect. Take your way.
Thank you, and good evening, council. I've been making the rounds on different communities, and we go out to celebrate when we get these accreditation. And sometimes I think we lose focus of, it's a pretty big achievement, because there's 10 categories that we go through during the evaluation process, and I won't bore you with all these different things. But there's some things that are just obvious when you come here and then you see the support. Broad-based community support. I've been working with Matt and Courtney and the board, and I know that the community has come in. When we did the evaluation, there was excellent participation. Historic preservation ethic, again, you hear that, I've heard it here tonight, I hear it all the time. The fact that the DDA is working on the historic tour, the app, so they get it, that's important to them. And then having an active board and committees, and again, well-thought-out work plans, active, active board members who actually come in and do stuff. So all those things, you know, that equates to a very successful program. And this accreditation, which this is the 14th consecutive year that the Ortonville DDA has achieved this national accreditation. This is actually coming from the National Main Street Center in Chicago, Illinois. And it's an evaluation of the organization. It's not an evaluation of the downtown or the village. It's not like, oh, this looks nice. It's an evaluation that says you have a strong board, your organization is run well, you handle your finances, you have a series of, you take advantage of education and things like that that are made available to you. So I just, again, want to congratulate Courtney and the team. And this is the plaque, so I would like to give that to you.
Thank you. Thank you. So I guess before we take our photo op, I'll just, I guess, answer any questions that anybody from the council has. I know we do Main Street 101 every so often, so you guys are fairly familiar with everything that we do, but always open for questions.
And a thank you to those that did come to the evaluation. It was wonderful to see the numbers seem to increase each year, and the involvement is great as well.
Yes, thank you to everybody who supports us and volunteers with us and shows up when we do things. Even if you're just there to say hi, it really means a lot. So thank you to everybody, community-wide, really, so.
Thank you guys for all the time and effort, and it's done, volunteer done for free. So that is really, that's wonderful.
Thank you. A lot, a lot, a lot of thanks go to Matt. He really works hard. So I'll go ahead and invite Wayne and Leanne and Tanya to join me and Tim. And we'll get a quick photo op from Shelby here.
Excellent.
And if council, I don't know, some of them have councilwoman?
Yeah, I think it was just.
If the council does advise anyone that.
No, I'd be on her, I'd be on her.
Oh, behind you. Behind him, I guess. Go, 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 behind him. Oh, we're supposed to be, oh, all right. I guess we are. Okay.
Ryan! Ryan! Come on! Ryan, get in here. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily, appreciate you. Get two more weeks. Because I won't be around tomorrow.
All right, so we thank you, Tim, for coming and joining us. We appreciate you.
Excellent.
And thank you again to the DDA for all of the effort.
And thank you again to the DDA for all of the effort. Um, as Tim mentioned, it's not just necessarily about events, it's, it's everything that they do for the community, the businesses, and, and everything that it takes to put together for the, each year. Next up this evening, um, we have the presentation for the electric vehicle charging stations, and we will begin with manager manages, please.
So, your package contains, um, the sample agreement between SEI, State Contracting Inc., uh, and a municipality to be named later. Um, it is the, uh, a template agreement to install EV chargers, uh, in the village. It's the template that's been used in neighboring municipalities and all over the place. Um, I don't have my write-up in front of me. Did you guys get that with more details? I usually just read it to you.
Yes.
Uh, but I can, I can wing it.
Yeah.
Um, so, Duane Lobstal has, has joined us this evening. He, uh, I'll call him up in a second. Um, we, we talked about this and EV chargers in the village a little bit, just kind of in a passing way at our last meeting. There's definitely interest, um, to pursue it. Uh, we've talked a little bit more. Uh, I wanted to check him out a little bit, make sure, um, it was a good deal. So I've spoken with, uh, municipal managers and, uh, village presidents and village managers across the area who, who've worked with Duane and SEI. I've heard a lot of very good things. Um, I've also spoken to Erin Cattell, who is the Chief Sustainability Officer for Oakland County, about EVs. She's written EV ordinances for several municipalities and works, um, countywide to adopt EVs. Um, she assured me that this is a very good way to go. Uh, she recommended a two-track approach. So, um, in, in agreement like this that gets EVs into municipal lots, um, is a great idea, as well as adopting an EV ordinance that the planning commission will work on in the near future, even though MacArthur's chatting in the back. Um, but to have an EV ordinance for, um, homes and businesses and, you know, if you're, if there's new builds going up that they be EV-ready, um, is, is a very good approach. Um, it's recommended by the county. So with that, um, I introduce Duane Lobstal to tell us more about SEI, EVs, and the village ordinance.
Well, good evening, folks. How are you? My, my name is Duane Lobstal. Um, I own, uh, State Electric Company. We're local, I live local, just down the street on Hadley Road, twenty-five years now. Um, trying to think where to start here exactly. Melanie's knows me for a long time, Ryan does. I got into this electric vehicle stuff, I've been electrician for thirty-five years. I'll go off on a tangent here, if you give me a split second, you'll understand where I'm going. COVID came, I didn't know what was happening. I walked in our office one day and told our controller, so we need to embrace things differently, we gotta change, things are not the same, let's go for technology. And we happen to have been reading an article about General Motors subsidizing the installation of electric vehicle chargers in the homes, so what better thing to get into, you know? So this thing has kind of evolved from that to the point where we're installing these things on every, everyday basis. So I approached you guys about the potential to put, uh, electric vehicle level-two chargers in potential locations in the village here. Um, I brought an example of one. Just so we know what we're talking about. Kinda, yeah, it's a small one. That is what they call a level-two charger. They are, you're gonna start seeing more and more of this kinda stuff around people's homes, parking lots, schools, municipalities. We have them in Holly, working with Clarkston right now, uh, been in discussion with Grand Blank in Axford. I have them in my parking lot. Actually drove EV car here today. So, this is, uh, basically what we've discussed. I know there's some locations that we've kind of predetermined, and, uh, I don't know if you have any questions for me or what your guys' thoughts are. Real exciting.
Um, I'm not real familiar with all the different, uh, makes and models, but do they all use the same charger, or you have to carry adapters, or how does?
Only Tesla, you need an adapter. If you have a Tesla and you wanna plug this in your Tesla, you need to place an adapter in it. Vice versa, if you have a, you know, anything but a Tesla, and you go to a Tesla charger, then you need an adapter to charge in there, so. Do not quote me for one hundred percent of that, because someone just told me the other day that any other vehicle, you can even charge it on a Tesla one. I, I don't know. And I have a Tesla, I haven't even tried it, you know, a different vehicle on a Tesla charger. But generally speaking, yeah, you'll be able to, these are universal.
As far as, go on, go ahead. If we were to install these, um, what electrical changes have to be made?
So, good question. Yeah. We looked at various locations here. The one I'm thinking of particularly is next to May, Maybelline's. Yeah, that one would require, require, again, this is all dependent on how many you wanna put in. Generally speaking, two is a good start. They draw forty amps apiece, which requires a fifty-amp breaker by National Electrical Code. So if you put two of them in, basically, you have to have a hundred-amp service, you have a hundred-amp service there, however, you use it for other events. So hypothetically, Joe Blow pulls up, or two people pull up and park their cars, and they're charging at full speed, and then you have a September Fest going on, and people are trying to run their food trucks, it could be, that could pose a problem. So my suggestion would be that you upgrade that electrical service in order to accommodate. The maximum size that we'll be able to get is usually three-twenty amp, but in this situation, I would say a two-hundred-amp service on the pool would be sufficient, 'cause you have a hundred now, you wanna add a hundred to it.
What, how many?
Add another hundred amps, so go from a hundred to a two-hundred-amp service.
Just for those that don't have knowledge of it, how does that, putting two of those out in this, let's say, this parking lot, how does that compare to somebody's household electricity and what they're running?
Same requirement.
No, I mean, like, your service in your home.
Okay.
Compared to running one of these guys, like, what, what type of service do you have in your home?
Yeah. So, that's a loaded question. And, and let me get at why, so I've been on many, many phone calls with General Motors, with other people in this industry to try to figure out what the size of the service is. Let's just, if I have somebody that's in this arena, talking about the infrastructure in Phoenix, Arizona, it's completely different than the metro Detroit area. They, a lot of these other newer communities that have come up, generally speaking, the homes have like a two-hundred-amp service. Well, it's not uncommon around here to have a hundred-amp service. As we have more and more electrical needs, the services have got larger, but as an electrician, I have actually changed out thirty-amp services in Detroit over the years. So, I mean, they exist here and there, but on average, I would say a hundred-amp service is the majority of them.
So, when, when you say that we, we'd have to upgrade, you're not talking, putting a huge power plant thing?
No, just a new panel with a two-hundred-amp feed.
So, if you're able to do that.
Exactly, like upgraded out of home.
So it's not like major construction?
No.
Is the one that, um, you were recommending, is it this one, or is it one that charges two of the same cars?
Uh, it's basically taking this and you add another mounting plate to the back. You have two chargers on one stand.
At one stand.
Yeah. Unless the situation, you know, each little, has, they have their own nuances all the time. Maybe you can, you have to have two posts and two chargers, I'm not, but I would say generally speaking, we'll put another.
On that, I would say.
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
And the charging stations.
Yeah.
How long does it take to charge?
Again, uh, depending on the size of your battery. So, think of your battery as like a fuel tank, and think of these as like a dispenser at the gas station. The bigger the fuel tank, the longer it's gonna take to charge. The, um, larger the ampacity these are able to deliver, the faster you can charge. So basically, in a sense, we'll say, up the pressure.
Just the immediate size of the car?
All night, ten hours?
No.
Yeah, from depletion to full charge. I have a little Chevy Bolt also, it's fully electric, and I charged it over the weekend at my house, and it was, it took, I think it was about nine hours, from completely empty to two-hundred-and-fifty-nine mile range is what they say the maximum is, but if you're easy on it and you use the regenerative braking, you can get a little bit over three-hundred. So above three-oh-six or something like that. If you're easy on it. Yeah. Yeah, it's something like that on the dash, yeah.
Exactly.
Three-oh-six.
I love it.
Any other questions?
Um, I, uh, oh, um, just as I, I was just gonna throw that out, 'cause you were mentioning the charging. When, if we go through with this, and the planning commission has to come up with the ordinance, ordinances will dictate, um, the amount of hours you're allowed to charge, because that could be an issue, and other communities have had that, where they come, someone puts it on charge for the whole night. So the ordinance will dictate all of that if this should go through.
And so it comes right into, I think this needs to go to the planning commission before we do anything, and I would recommend that, so that they can come up with, see how this gels with any kind of ordinance they would put together. We're starting off, you know, right at the onset, so I, I'd like to make a recommendation that we send this to the planning commission to start the process.
I have one other question, this, okay. If I pull up to this, how do I pay for the energy?
As a vehicle owner, charging. Yeah.
Uh, I do this, but, even in my own parking lot, I think my office is ready, I have a customer there. You wanna see what you just called, I pull up, I open the app, the camera opens, it's scanning, it'll need to take a picture, and it's kinda getting close, it catches that QR code, immediately jumps up at me, start, I'm fully, I'm in the car, this is third charge, it's in, my credit card's in jail.
After you put their credit card down?
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That's gonna be another issue I can see across the board, but, yeah, then it just charges me.
Um, see, that kind of, and I guess this is just my own curiosity. So you do that, if somebody wanted to be devious and unplug that from somebody's car, plug it into their car, does that thing stop, um, does it stop the, the charge card from being charged once it's pulled out of the car?
Yes.
Also, they, they couldn't do?
Yeah, it stops the whole situation, yeah, and they gotta restart it. So, yeah, this, uh, oh, that's another thing I wanna see.
This has come up, this question all, all the time, you know, so you have, everybody's ready for them, this whole thing. These have your power, and inside it, there's communication terminals as well. This could be like, you know, this could be energized, you look at it, you know, it's designed to, again, this has to be connected to move it, with the charger to communicate your car to turn this on. Now, this is all, that's it, software, you know, really, it's not, you know, so much cost, it's a software, I'd say, but. So, yeah, it's, uh, we haven't had any events, any issues, and I haven't even heard of any.
I mean, EV cars have been out for quite a long time already, they're becoming more popular as we are aware.
Duane, from a, just from a practical standpoint, so if I drove my, uh, four-cylinder Chevy Malibu to this station, and it takes nine hours to charge it, and, and it's hitting my credit card, what, in today's dollars, what, what is that charge gonna cost?
Zero, because you got a four-cylinder engine. I'm kidding.
Oh, wow. No, that's not true. That's not true, is it, really?
So, no, you wanna know what it would charge?
I know.
So if you had an electric car, you.
Four-cylinder special, huh?
Yeah, if you had an electric car and you wanted to plug in and charge, how much are you gonna get charged?
I'm saying, yes.
Right. All depending on what we program this thing to charge. So the industry standard is double about what the delivered power rate is. So generally speaking, we're looking at about twenty-one cents, DTE down here, right? Yeah. About twenty-one cents delivered. The average cost is about forty-two. So I, all the ones we set up, I'd set them at forty-two cents. So twenty-one cents pays for the utility bill. If the service is in my name, then it's even easier. If the service is in Village of Ortonville's name, then Village of Ortonville gets twenty-one cents for the electricity consumed, plus the incentive, which, are they aware of that? Anybody else? So I usually, whenever I put these in, I make sure that the, the village is incentivized. The average rate is about two cents a kilowatt hour. I just tell everybody three cents, and I'm not looking, it's not a whole bunch of money, and it's, these aren't gonna generate much money sitting in Ortonville right now, let's, but someday down the road, they might. So then we.
Three-two cents was per hour?
Per, per kilowatt hour. Per kilowatt hour. So if you have a sixty-five kilowatt battery, multiply that by point-four-two, that'll tell you what it'd take to go from zero to a hundred percent. So what is that? They'll give you a good example. They'll give you a good example, Pat. Sixty-five times point-four-two, twenty-seven dollars to get a full tank of gas.
Regardless of how long it takes?
Regardless of how long it takes, 'cause that's what, yeah, kilowatt hour, so, trying to think how to explain this. Pretend it's fuel.
And you, and you go to the gas station in the middle of the winter, and the filter's all plugged up, and the, the car's running real slow, right? You don't pay any more for that twenty gallons, 'cause it took you forty-five minutes to fill your tank, than it would have been taking you in three seconds. Follow me? Same. So if your battery can take it, depending on how long, you know, and if you, if you went from zero to a hundred percent, and it's sitting there, then you're not paying for any electricity. However, there's a caveat to this, that we generally build into these, and it's called the well time. So you, hopefully, that people, it's kinda new, so we're hoping that, and we've seen this so far, is there's some etiquette involved, especially people that are into this. You park your car, three hours later, you check your status, oh, wow, I'm fully charged, I should go move my car, because there's somebody else that might wanna pull in and charge their car. If you don't move your car, and you're a hundred percent charged, and eight hours later, there's, you get charged for it, for sitting there.
I mentioned the fact that.
If I program it that way.
Place deals.
That's, that's just not fair to others.
At the end of the day, if you have a place-making object, it brings people to downtown, and they're gonna hang out, they're gonna grab a slice of pizza at Papabella's, they're gonna walk around the village while they're waiting for their car to charge.
Oh, another thing.
And there's an app?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna get at, so, after getting all these key points, you know? So, uh, I mean, it's all kinda new to me, too, within the last couple of years, but, you know, someone wants to charge their car publicly, they're driving down M-15, and they're like, ooh, I'm running low on juice. Do you have an app? I have Plug Chair, I can pull it up, it'll tell me all the chargers in this general location. Oh, here's a public charger here. Oh, it's work, it's working. Oh, it's empty, it's not reserved. I'm gonna reserve it, I'll be there in five minutes. You show up, plug your car in, you move on, next guy might have a reservation, and it's, this technology is changing like you wouldn't believe. The landscape of automobiles is rapidly changing.
How's that map looking today?
Pretty sparse here.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's my office, and I'm checking.
Is this Clarkston Avenue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it would be the closest is here right now?
And we, another, uh, rock I looked under for funding and things like that was Consumers Energy does grants for EV chargers all over the place, um, except they are working with the state of Michigan to say, we wanna install EV chargers along key tr, alter, transportation alternative.
So I can elaborate on that?
Yeah.
Alternative fuel quarters.
The mains.
Yeah, so as we're all aware, this legislation's gotten passed with all this money, and, uh, they're looking at, over the course of time, five-hundred thousand level-three chargers[1788.36] five hundred thousand level-three chargers throughout the United States. This is a level-two. This is a slow charger. A level-three is what they call a DCFC, stands for direct current fast charge. Uh, I have fifteen sites in Upper Peninsula of Michigan right now that I'm working with, the state of Michigan, Eagle, putting DCFC chargers in. There's grant money available for it. I might've been a little bit late to the game. I happen to have a ton of family in the UP, I like it up there, it's just seemed kinda like, kinda fit, you know? A lot of people down here, the competition wasn't as stiff, so let's go do some in the UP. Not one of them is operational yet, we're actually installing as we speak. There's a lot of her poops go through, so I don't have any real data to support how they're doing yet. Where am I going with this? So, with all this infrastructure, this money that's getting pushed into the states is what we call the National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Program. So I started another company called NEVI, because that's the acronym. So our company, another entity of mine is NEVI Pro, and we're distributing, distributing this brand, which is used by, they're called Juice Pumps, and they're made by a company called NL. And if you Google NEVI Pro, you'll see our website, it's under construction, it's just getting started and then eventually. I'll be distributing those and doing installations and charging solutions for anybody wanting to put high-speed chargers in. A completely different animal than we're talking about right now. You could take a car from zero, like a Chevy Bolt, you could charge it in twenty minutes. Fast. So, the technology is still catching up on battery technology. So some batteries are not able to accept the high-speed chargers to the degree that the charger's capable of doing without damaging the battery, so you have a bottleneck on some of those. But General Motors has really come quite far with what they call Ultium technology and they're getting faster and faster.
Um, how do these batteries do in the winter?
Probably could look at twenty percent reduction. They're not as efficient.
Because it would be exposed to elements, or-
Batteries are these.
Of these?
Batteries are in the, in the car, there's no batteries in here.
Okay.
Your car won't have the, uh, range in the winter as it will in the summer.
Okay, but it wouldn't, it won't be affected at all, at all by the charging in the winter? This will not slow down because of below zero? Beautiful, okay.
So Brian, what would you like to see from us this evening?
Um, last I think kind of nodded and said, let's pursue EV chargers in the village. Um, at this point, I think if we're ready to, um, I would like if we're, with Duane, uh, negotiating uh, the, the contract essentially this year to make it official, uh, and get started on this process.
Okay. Um, I agree with Kay that, uh, number one, uh, I don't think we should be proposing this, I think the planning commission should be proposing where they should be located at, the village. Um, and two, uh, we shouldn't be doing this unless, unless it's a zero cost to us. Um, so if we have to put in a new service, I don't think that's, I don't know if that's really, uh, makes sense. Um, but again, they should go to the planning commission to, to submit the proposal on what we should be doing and how we would be doing it.
My good comment, um, the, uh, sustainability officer from the county, I asked her that same question and she said having municipal EV chargers, uh, can be completely different from the ordinance. So the ordinance, uh, it's a two-track approach, so we can do this today and start an ordinance tomorrow and be working on both at the same time.
Not require any ordinance, just about the planning of the village and, and as we move forward with this technology, how we honestly have implemented in the village, or we have planning commission.
So you're stating where they would go, not rather we choose to engage in a contract and install?
And how?
But aren't those two different things than what our conversation is right now? Our conversation right now is do we want to purchase, which is not a planning commission choice, and are we pursuing a contract with a certain company?
Like considering the how. So again, we keep, keep feeling like we keep bringing all these things to council, we don't bring all the information. So should we do this? Oh, yeah, we should do this. But then he's standing there telling us saying that, well, you gotta drop a new service to do that. Well, how much does that cost? What's the whole picture? If we're gonna bring this to council, then it should say, here's the plan, here's where it's gonna go, and this is how much it's gonna cost to install. If it's a zero-dollar install, that's fine. If it's a five-thousand-dollar install, then we should know that. We should know the whole pie before we agree to one piece of it. My two cents, thank you.
When we talked about it last time, did we not talk about one in one space and one in the other to avoid redoing the service? That you can use a pole for one, is that not the original conversation?
So we walked around and saw about six different spots in the village where we could put them. Um, we agreed, we don't wanna put them on the street, we don't wanna put them, we wanna put it somewhere visible but not in the way. Um, so the lot next to me, Malina's, made the most sense, um, because there's already a pole there, so we would have to put in a service at our expense. Uh, but if these-
Well, let me, let me elaborate on that because I think Keith might be, my recollection, okay? Remember, if you recall, I said I would put that service in at my expense, but then when an event comes and I paid for the service and it's in my name, then I charge the vendors for the money, for the power consumed. Fair enough? If you don't like that, I can put a service in, or you could put a service in, and I'm paying you back income if it's getting used, correct? To hopefully cover that. Or I can put a separate service in next to it, one's mine and the other one's for events.
Again, just looking for the whole plan.
Well, this is very, very entry level, this is in its infancy steps, and I'm not looking to make waves, I'm doing this for free, basically, yeah.
And I'm not trying to ram this down anyone's throat, it's a simple agreement, I'd like to negotiate the agreement with Duane. I'm not saying you're type this as is verbatim right now.
And there's points of contention in there that every municipality has brought to my attention, that we've worked through the details. That's just my two cents.
So, Bob, would you like to give any feedback as to at what point you, and I didn't, no, you can't speak for an entire board, at what point you feel it might be appropriate for planning to be involved in this process, in your opinion? I know you're not speaking for everybody.
Gotcha. But, I mean, it is gonna require permits of, of a couple of different levels, electrical and that sort of thing, and the parking lots or the locations, you know, does that fit in our future thoughts of multiples? Or are we looking at just one or two scattered around? I, I think it just having a, a document showing where those are proposed so that a board's just sitting, looking at it and saying, yes, this'll work, this meets the master plan, where we want to do things, and how it's gonna be done. Uh, to, you know, we're not here, I don't think the planning commission's here to approve the use of it or any of that, it's just, uh, the location and what type of, uh-
In the ordinance.
Right, what, what's in the ordinance, but also is there, improvements gotta be done to the parking lots to do that? But that, I mean, that's questions that, that should be asked as we, uh, as we look at the drawing. And it shouldn't be, uh, any big issue, but still in all, somebody should be from an outside party or group looking at it to make sure that it's, uh, it's gonna fit in our community the way we want it to look.
Back to, I guess, Brian, I'll ask you to clarify one more time because I feel like we are keep trying to combine two different things and decide whether the cart or the horse comes first. I don't wanna put words in your mouth, is your request to begin conversation with a contract that you would bring in front of us, which would then decide the steps in which we would process?
Yes.
Proceed with the process. Right. Any other questions or comments? Anything for Duane before we-
I don't have any.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome, thank you. Yep.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing that to us.
So where are we at? Let's counsel's wish.
Thank you.
Are we done, are we motioning, what are we doing?
I, I, I like Ryan's, um, assessment of it.
Need a motion for that?
If somebody is interested, or are we looking for something else from Ryan before we're to the point?
I would like him to pursue, um, this, but do we need a motion for him to pursue?
Yeah, that's fine.
Because we're, what we're looking for is, is we're asking him to purchase something in the future, therefore we would request him to gather that information for a purchase.
Yes, that would come before, uh, before planning and council, before it was purchased. So I'll make a motion for the village manager to, um, pursue, pursue a charging station agreement with SAI, or SCI with getting details and plans for next steps for planning commission and village council.
We have a motion on the table by trustee, and I have it supported by trustee Green. Do we have any questions or comments on the motion?
Do you mind bringing that back?
Just gonna say, everybody. For the village manager to pursue a charging station agreement with SCI, getting details and plans for next steps for planning commission and village council. Are we ready for a vote?
Am I missing anything? Am I missing a point? I think there's something- There is something you're right, yeah. But am I missing a point, Brian?
No, you, you're good, fair enough. It's, uh, this is one of those things that we can be, uh, forward, then being moving forward village, or we could last about a minute for three years and then EVs have happened everywhere else in our network, we've been down that route for. Um, I think waiting another month to deepen the application, make sure we-
Check every possible box, I'm not sure where they are because I've looked already. Uh, but I'm happy to continue to pursue this and come up with a fully fleshed-out agreement. I'm gonna present that to council at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, should I put an end date then? Would, we all feel better with that? Um, as far as this being decided, because I don't want this going on two and three years either.
Like, you rejected, were you expecting us to say, just go ahead and do it and then tell us what you did?
I bet the council was comfortable with that, we could do it that way.
For the agreement.
For the agreement, yeah.
Just the simple agreement, which will have to come before us to decide. So let's speed down.
Is that what you're going to do then, with the steps, and then can this come in front of planning on the sixth? So at our next meeting, we're all set with it to go? Because the way that Tonya just described it was to go and have a plan, blah, blah, blah.
He wants to go right now, he wants the okay to go right now, is the way I'm reading.
I'm gonna pull my motion, I'm pulling my motion.
Brian, which one?
I don't know that I can, I don't recommend pulling motion. I don't have the details of the, um, because I take notes on a legal pad in my office that I didn't bring. Um, it, uh, having seen SCI work at several other places with other entities, uh, I trust them and I trust that they have our best interests at heart. Um, will they make money from this? Yes. Will we recruit the cost? We will, very slowly. Um, and as Duane said, he's willing to take on the cost. So I think it's not a bad idea to pursue. Um, the village of Holly has one that they negotiated. Um, I talked to their village manager for about an hour, um, a couple of weeks ago about it and their process because they, it was not something they were interested in for a long time, and then they decided they were and pursued it. Um, I, yeah, I, I can't say enough, uh, how much, how eager I am to work with SCI. Um, and I think, uh, having worked through it, read through it several times in ways, uh, I think, I think even verbatim, it's not horrible, the contract. Of course, our attorney would be involved before, uh, it came to council to be approved. But, um, as Duane said, at getting over a couple of sticking points, it's a very agreeable path forward for us.
Brian, I just have a question.
Um, hold on a second. So Melanie withdrew, and I just wanna double-check that Kay, your support, that you don't wanna pursue the motion instead of, do you wanna withdraw?
I, I just wanna make sure we have the right motion.
I'm withdrawing mine.
She's withdrawing, do you choose to keep that motion and take that motion, or do you choose to withdraw?
Well, she withdrew it.
I withdrew it.
All right. I would like to make a motion that we can entrust our village manager to pursue a contract with SCI um, and to see what that will look like for the village of Ortonville. I entrust him with that decision at this point.
Do I have this one question?
Uh, hold on a second. We have a motion on the table by President Bryce, supported by trustee Green. Do we have any questions?
Does the village manager need an ordinance to get a pole?
That would be an order.
He does.
It's an agreement.
It's not, you're saying, go get, go get the pole?
We're saying we are interested in possibly spending an amount of money, please tell us what that would look like. We are interested in this project, what would that look like?
Why do we need a motion for that?
That's why I, I asked that.
Informally, well, informally, Ryan could do it, which is what he's been doing anyway.
Not if it's within the budget amount that he gets to spend, he kinda, we have to allow him to spend.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying he can, he can, he's gonna take it all the way to the money, ask us for money. I just mean, find out what's going on, how much it's gonna cost, what it's gonna look like, it's the standard.
That's what we're asking for, correct?
Which is what is good, you know? And then just say, here it is.
And then, if it's something we approve, then there was the, then you're going to create an ordinance. So then it will then go through that process with planning. And it'll naturally follow what it needs to. But what we're asking for is can you create a contract with an interested party?
So back to my question, why does it, why do we need a motion for an agreement?
Not a quote, it's a negotiation, it's a agreement.
Should we bring all kinds of contracts to us for all kinds of things, you know?
Uh, so Keith is our engineer of record, SMART is a countywide service, the contracts that are here are ones that are, they're regular vendors. We've never worked with Duane before or SCI, to my knowledge.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the process, so that, so because he's a new vendor, that requires a motion for you to communicate with him?
It's, it's a whole new arena we've never been in, it's not one we discussed before, our budget process, it's, uh, EVs are new to us entirely.
It's an agreement, which is different than the ordinance, different than just getting one. He's entering, he's trying to set up an agreement with this company for us.
So before he establishes the relationship, are we interested?
Right.
Is this something we're vested in? Any more questions or comments on the motion? Would we like it read back?
I could send it mine, did someone make a new one?
Yeah.
To entrust the village manager to pursue a contract with SCI and to see what that would look like for the village.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Are we ready for a vote or any more questions, comments on the motion?
There's two words that keep getting tossed back and forth.
Contracted agreement.
So, my understanding, from what we're talking about, the agreement would be to a lot of, uh, Ryan went up to, I forgot the gentleman's name, I'm sorry.
Duane.
Duane, went up to Duane and said, hey, you know, facetiously, uh, we'll pay fifty bucks for you to put this in. That's just, it's not an agreement, contract, I should say, it's not a contract. It's just saying, okay, yeah, if we do sign a contract and that's part of the agreement, that's what you will pay, basically.
Well, you have a copy of the agreement right now from someone, somewhere else.
I know, but nowhere in here does it-
You start with this and work with the guy to get our agreement.
What I'm, just, because I looked through here and I could've looked at, you know, looked over it, but-
So Tonya, is your concern that I changed from contract to agreement?
Well, I'm just wondering-
Because to keep it consistent with the agreement, is that what the concern is? Because I have no problem with that.
Yeah, instead of contract? Yeah, I just-
I have no problem with that. Do you have a problem with the second, second theme then? Okay. Jenna, please, can we change that to agreement instead of contract? Any other questions or comments on the motion? Are we ready for a vote? Are we so confused? All right. Are we good? Do we need a roll call? Are we good with a regular voice? Pardon? Ryan? All right, all right, we will do a roll call, please, Jenna. George?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Nyval?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
Dialis? Bryce?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries six zero. Thank you, Dwayne. Next up is a resolution to approve the adult use marijuana establishment ordinance, an ordinance that would repeal ordinance number 70 of 2019. And I'll start that off with manager Manus, please.
So, this is another one. It is an ordinance question. The Planning Commission has not been insulted directly on this. As we know, it's well documented that the village did not write the ordinance in question. So it's up to the village council, if you want to go for it tonight and adopt the adult use marijuana establishments ordinance, right now you may. You may also refer it to the Planning Commission. The ordinance cites, in section 25, it says that the ordinance shall be codified by the village according to the usual practice. Usual practice is not a definition that we have anywhere for this. So it leaves it up to the village council. If adopted tonight, it would be posted in the paper and all those good things that normally do. If we decided to wait, we would still be, we would still be held accountable to the application period and timelines and things that are within the ordinance. But a September adoption does not impact those things, and we, we have to have the application window starting very shortly thereafter. But it would not entirely jeopardize our timeline on that. To my, to my understanding, when I, when I have a chance to ask our attorney about it, I will confirm this. But, so, for the village council, consideration, if you would like to adopt the adult use marijuana establishments ordinance tonight, or recommend to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation, I leave it up to the village council.
Can I comment on that part? There, there is nothing that, and this is where now, because the other two things I tried to get in front of planning, this is, there's no need to get it in front of planning. It is what it is. They can't recommend, they can't change, they say they, we, there's nothing they can do about this. So it could go in their packet if we approve it, to let them know that this is going to be the ordinance, so they can start working on it on September 6th. So just please keep that in mind.
I can say, doesn't, wasn't this part of the, when they voted, that's what they voted for, is it couldn't be changed for two or three years? So going to the Planning Commission on this, there's nothing like, there's nothing they can do. So.
You gotta find a way to include them in some of these things.
I understand that, but they should have been included prior to that.
Well, they have been included. It's been, in the paper, it's public, it was what you voted on. You've seen the ordinance for months and months and months.
What I'm saying is that, the way this was worded, there's nothing anybody can do about it.
And I, and I, that's what I was going to say, that in no way, shape, or form was a purposeful oversight. It is a process. There is nothing that planning can do besides look at it and say, fabulous, this is a forced ordinance, thank you very much. It's, it's recorded in our meeting, and we're going to give it back to you. What can we do? What can they do? So what difference does 30 days makes? It makes a big difference for the office staff.
Yes, it does.
And their timeframe for the next steps.
I'd like to make a motion then to approve the adult use marijuana establishment ordinance as presented, and it's, do I say the resolution number, the 20, resolution number 2022-06?
Just like to report repealing. Would you also like, in the motion that you, what you were repealing, or no?
Okay, I'll put it in there. Ordinance to repeal ordinance number 70 of 2019.
Support.
All right. We have a motion on the table by trustee Nyval, supported by trustee Randazzo. Questions or comments? Bob, do you, do you want to come up? Is there anything, questions, comments, thoughts you had on if we proceed with this process? Any concerns or?
No, none at all. I just, it'll be on our agenda to review it, so we get up to speed with every line on it, so we got a good grip of it. But I understand, we can't approve it, or we could disapprove it all day long, but I mean, I mean that. But I'm just, I'm just glad you're discussing it that way.
That's what I said, I just want to see if there was any input that you hadn't, that you've thought of, we hadn't. Thank you. Any questions or comments before we vote?
So like with the term, in the usual, usual way, with that it'll be adopted and codified, there are some other phrases and things, things like that in the ordinance that we don't normally use. So the Planning Commission will have some work to do with interpretation, because there are several things in there that are not black and white. There are some shades of gray, that it will fall on the Planning Commissioners to determine what those, what those mean.
So as with the new ordinance, as I know our focus was vocabulary, is that something that will be utilized in this new ordinance?
In the ordinance that the village writes, absolutely. Ones that we didn't write, we didn't get to use vocabulary.
Well, it says any changes that they have to approve of them. So can we not create vocabulary and have them approve of? Of those gray areas, we can create an assumed vocabulary and then?
Yes, it's almost like a definition.
Correct, and have them look at it.
Yeah, a definition thing that we went through, so that would be adding to that.
So that is something we could request, they can choose rather they agree.
And I'll work with our attorney on it, if there's ways that we can add other, you know, standing definitions that apply, but they apply everything.
That's what I mean, you know, those assumed gray areas. Okay, perfect. Any other questions or comments? All right.
I just have questions on what, what we're really saying here. I know when I was reading the literature on this, is this, right away I get suspicious when somebody gives me, you know, three, three-point font or something to read on this, it's a lot of verbiage. But I see things in there, for example, that we gotta put the bill to, for where they want to settle? Isn't that something that they should be doing? When I say settle, I mean establish.
It's too late.
Why do we?
It went to the voters.
And I was just gonna say.
The judge ordered it.
Pat, this would be something, once we deny or approve, which we have a choice, we can, you can then have a discussion with your concerns with Planning Commission on what they may or may not do from there.
I just mentioned, off the top of my head, there's two or three things in here, I'm thinking, really. And so bottom line on this too, so, I guess I never thought of that. This is for up to two establishments in Ortonville, up to two establishments in Ortonville, not one, but two. And then, and the ballot on November is just for one. So is this if, if, if?
But that's not our village issue.
That's Brandon.
But that's, so that's a possibility of three marijuana shops, two, two in the village, and one in, one in the township. So that's three for our area, right? Am I understanding that right?
Two in our municipality and one additional.
I, I, I'm, that's unbelievable. Okay, I'm done.
All right. So, any other questions or comments? And when we are full in one moment, we will then take a vote. Is, we will please do a roll call vote. This is a resolution.
Before we go into a closed session, can you give me like two minutes? I've got another people I need to vote.
Absolutely. Yeah, as, do you mind, can, I mean, we could squeeze you in as soon as we vote, we can't, we're open, but. As soon as we vote, would you like to jump in? Okay.
Okay. I have a question. Is, is the, yeah.
Please. Why not?
The question is, is this going to the Planning Commission, so you just can define vocabulary and then?
The vote is that we will approve the motion that was on the ballot, or, I mean, the ordinance that was on the ballot, that is what's in front of us now. Next steps then can be discussed from that point. But that's not the current motion, is the process, it's a specific ordinance at this point. So, thank you. All right. We are ready for a roll call, and would anybody like it read back? Motion? Are we good?
I just, I have a question. People aren't known, aren't these, aren't they supposed to introduce themselves? The gentleman in the green?
It was a momentarily, we had a break, because we were not here to finish. It was just a conversation. Because it's not the appropriate time for questions. All right, good question though. We're ready for a roll call, but when you are, Jenna? Green?
Yes.
Nyval?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
Dialis?
Yes.
George?
No.
Bryce?
Yes.
That motion carries five one. Thank you. And Ryan will keep us updated as to next steps on that. If you don't mind, please, could we have Greg step forward? We're in very casual run this evening. Not our norm.
Lieutenant Glover, Branda Substation Commander for the Sheriff Department. I know you guys are going into closed session tonight, referenced the marijuana issue, and I just wanted to bring up a couple of points, just for you to keep in mind. One is the locations of the properties that are being talked about. Obviously, they're a high-traffic area, bad intersection for both those locations. The proximity to the schools, which is a big one for me, and the school-aged kids that walk past, that will be walking past both of those establishments, all spring, summer, and fall, going back and forth to the A and W. And it's come up in question as far as the varsity drive property, where the old football field's at, is still considered part of the school district. And that's, it can't be more than 200 yards across that road to where that, those establishments might have gone, which is a concern. Third, in my personal opinion, the false advertising on all of the signage that went up for this vote. Talk about money to law enforcement, monies to the community. Well, as substation commander, I can tell you, I never had one conversation with anybody from any of those companies that, that are proposing these, these establishments. Keep in mind, these are not grow operations, these are retail stores, which is a cash business. You have no idea how much money they're gonna make there. And I have never seen any money from a retail operation come back into the community. Now, if this was a major grow operation that's regulated by the state of Michigan, yes, money does go back to the community, such as it did in Orion. And I've heard rumors about a township supervisor coming out here and kind of pitching this for us, or somebody to talk to, well, I went through a walkthrough of one of those grow operations. I know for a fact that the grow operation itself did bring money into the township for a new township hall and a new substation. But I never heard that for any retail operation. The other thing is, is I'll bet you I've had 100 calls going up to the vote and after the vote. Keep in mind, we, we talk about, you know, the village, being able to have two of these establishments in the village, now there's a proposal to the township to have one in the township. This is not just a village issue. This is a township issue. You're looking at the possibility of three of these establishments in this township, and we don't have three ice cream stores in this township, or things of that that benefit everybody. And, and I, I think it's gonna be a lot bigger problem than what you see, especially with the location to where that these establishments are probably gonna go in, as far as M15 and South Street. That's a major intersection for us, we have a lot of accidents there, a lot of kids crossing the road, and I'm against that location completely. I'm against the, the marijuana establishments in this township, I've been vocal about it. I'm not for it, and I think the location's horrible. I just want you to think about that before you go into this closed session. Because I don't, I don't believe from the last meeting I was at, that the township or your village attorney answered a lot of these questions. I don't think he has the, the answers, and personally, I don't think he has the knowledge that some of these other attorneys do that are representing these operations. And it's, it's an issue. Thank you. Thanks.
Very much.
Thank you.
I will just state that that was a agenda item, but unfortunately, Lieutenant Glover was not available on agenda items earlier, so we did have him pop in a little later than normal. So thank you very much for being patient with us. All right, we are back on track with the establishment of the annual application fee for adult use marijuana establishments, and I will start with manager Manus on that, please.
If the Michigan Regulation Taxation Marijuana Act, the Merkma Act of 2018 establishes that the municipality can just set an annual fee of not more than $5,000 to the right application administrative and enforcement costs associated with the operation of the marijuana establishment in the municipality, chapter and verse in your package. Based on discussion with individuals, other municipal managers, the village attorney, the $5,000 annual fee seems to be favored for establishments to apply in the village Ortonville. So I recommend we consider a motion to establish an annual fee for application for adult use marijuana establishments as $5,000 per application.
All right, thank you. Ready straight forward.
Establish the annual fee of $5,000 for the adult use marijuana establishments for application.
We have a motion on the table by trustee Green, and that's supported by trustee Nyval. Do we have any questions or comments at this time?
Okay, I'm just gonna say, does this have to go to the Planning Commission to, to work that in, to whatever they have to?
The application process is dictated in the ordinance. We didn't write it on the subject matter expert, but it mostly falls on the village to administer the scoring process and application window and all that good stuff. So it's really not a Planning Commission process, the application. It will require Planning Commission input, as well as the input of the village council, but the whole process mostly falls on Jen's shoulders.
Okay. As far as it's five, 5,000 per application, if three of us, again, hypothetically, if three of us here wanted to put an establishment in, we each have to pay 5K, but.
Annually.
Annually. But if for some reason say, I don't pass this scoring, we have to give that 5K back to them?
No.
That's, okay. And was there, and I'm sorry, that was a lot to read, but is there anything in here that states if they do something against the ordinance, that they can be removed from the establish, you know?
There's a process therefore maintaining.
Okay.
A license or.
Okay.
Things like that.
But there was something in there.
So I would venture to say there's a difference between the licensing and the ordinance. So the ordinance enforcement, correct, would be our level? If, I'm gonna throw it out there, you delivered at a wrong time, or, or something along those lines, versus the licensing of, I mean, the facility, correct?
Right. Our state licensing agency regulates the actual license. We handle the, the site plan, the approval process to open a business there that follows, you know, our inspector, our building inspector, you know, things like that. So that's what the $5,000 is meant to cover those costs, the cost of genestat for all the scoring and things like that, the cost of building inspections, this, all that, the costs associated with the operation that, that fall on us.
But that's state-level enforcement.
Yeah, the state has their own process and application fees and things like that, are different than ours.
I have a question about the motion. The annual fee is separate from the application fee? They can both be set, are we setting the application fee or the annual fee?
I didn't say annual.
You have to renew it every year.
Oh, you did say, it does say, establish the annual fee. I want to change my motion to say that then, Jenna, please. Annual, yeah. I'm sorry. I didn't read that.
No, that's a good touch.
It's section four of the ordinance.
It's just the annual fee of 5,000 to be submitted with the application.
If you want to hedge your bets and say a $5,000 application fee and annual $5,000 fee, I don't.
Ever you want to word that, Jenna?
I like the combination, like you said.
I do too.
Because I, I don't believe it's, you must, you have to apply for your, with your annual fee, correct? It's not just paying the fee, you have to apply.
Right.
So it's.
So the five brand is to. apply first, and if they get it, they have a
They have to apply.
Is there another, like, if I give you five grand and I'm approved, do I have to give you another five grand for that, starting that year?
That's your number year.
Well, I know what I'm saying is that
The same year.
That 5,000, if I went into you on Jan, December, or January 1st, right, gave you five grand for the application fee, and you approve me January 2nd, the next day, do I have to give you a $5,000 for the first year? You see what I'm saying? Or is that 5,000 I gave you initially?
When he has a order. To establish the annual fee for application.
Section 14 of the ordinance fees, the village council by resolution may establish the amount of the non-refundable annual fee not to exceed $5,000 per application to be assessed to the applicant. So if you would like to call it the non-refundable annual fee for the ordinance, I think that would probably be having less.
Is there an application fee as well, though? That's what I'm getting at.
No, in the same sentence, it says for the application.
That is the application fee, the annual fee for application.
So Kay, are you comfortable with that? Change?
Yes.
And Melanie, are you comfortable with that change?
Because I did skip over that, I didn't read that right. That was my fault.
As we know, if we leave things gray, we come with ordinance that says 20 years later that we're trying to figure out where the funds goes.
So to establish the non-refundable annual fee. That's what we're calling it.
Is that what it said?
Yes, section 14.
And you're comfortable with that, Kay?
Yes.
Melanie, you're comfortable with that?
Okay.
Perfect.
Really, they asked, just for clarification, again, that's the annual fee, is there not a application fee, which is two different things?
The next sentence states, and I don't want to be wrong in the words, but for the application. It's the same.
Per application.
Bottom of the little paper that Ryan wrote on August 17th.
We're talking about in the ordinance.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
The village council is establishing on the non-refundable annual fee not to exceed $5,000 per application to be assessed to the applicant. But it's an annual fee of $5,000. It's not an application fee, which are two different things.
And that's what I was getting at.
Well, they talk about the application requirements.
Doesn't say a fee, it says $5,000 per application. That is the fee for the application.
No, it's not in the text.
Okay. That's the way I read it.
Just offhand, would these be FOIA?
We'll know what they are.
I understand it, but I'm just saying, is this something that can be FOIA? The answers?
Basically, basically, we're using our money to help them find.
Just for a hot minute, we'll get it back.
No, we're using our money to protect ourselves, so we know where are the correct law requirements of a facility that looks to be
Needs the ordinance.
In this space.
Why don't, why don't they do that and tell us where they want to locate? Why don't they spend their own money, tell us where they want to go?
They're going to, but we need to know.
We still have to know.
Because if they chose.
Well, we'll wait till they tell us.
But we still have to spend.
I got to say, we want to, we want to go on the A and W side. We have to tell them, no, it's not acceptable.
But how can we tell them no?
We have, we have documentation.
Well, I don't want to spend our money when it's up to them to find a suitable location. That's all I'm saying.
We're going to be spending.
I don't want to spend my time to help them.
We have a timeframe that we have to approve their application.
Well, there again.
And if we don't meet those requirements, we are violation of an ordinance. So we have to do our due diligence to be prepared for this process.
We're in violation of, we're in violation of their ordinance. Don't you just sit here and think this is half-assed.
The judge ordered it, though. We
Hold on, it is our ordinance. I don't see it, I just don't see it that way.
We didn't say we liked it either. Do you think we like this? Do you really think we like this?
I do, because you're voting yes on it.
So again, we're going back to conversation.
Because you don't understand what's going on. I don't like this at all. You're wrong, you couldn't be wronger, all of us, all of us, and you all can support me.
The conversation is, we're looking at a land survey request from the manager to continue the process. Do we have any questions about the estimate for the survey?
Is this amount, is that for every, you know, is that just for one location, two location, or is it for
Survey to determine where.
Areas.
Oh, this would be, they would survey the entire village for that amount.
Right, well, maybe.
Well.
At this point.
At this point, yes.
It could change. Things could change. A zoning could change, a parcel could be sold, bought.
Put their place up for sale that we are not aware of. That might fit that.
Do we have any questions on, besides that one? Because that was a good question. On this estimate. Are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
All right. Jenna, again, roll call vote, please, because we will be spending money. Randazzo?
Yes.
Dialis? George?
No.
Green?
Yes.
Nyval?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
That motion carries five one. Last item in our new business is the approval of the SMART fiscal year 23 municipal credit community. Let's try it again. Credit, community credit for the contract for the SMART buses. Smart transportation, excuse me. You start with you?
That's, is that this one right here?
It is.
Oh, SMART, okay.
It contains the municipal credit, community credit contract for fiscal year 2023 between the village of Ortonville and SMART. It's pretty perfunctory, it's one we do every year. It's regular process, right? Transportation being talked about quite a bit. I talked to SMART a fair amount about this year, and with transportation and a millage on the ballot in November could impact this, but as of right now, this is at standard for all communities within SMART.
This is what we have paid in the past.
It's very similar.
Yeah, okay.
It's in line with the last many years of SMART contracts.
Make a motion that we approve the municipal credit and community credit contract for fiscal year 2023.
We have a motion on the table by Trustee Green, and that's supported by Trustee Randazzo. Do we have any questions or comments at this time?
Yeah, what grade is this?
What what?
What, what grade is this being?
I can't hear. What what?
Rate.
Oh, rate, I couldn't hear. I thought I heard grade.
Rate.
I believe the municipal credit comes from, it's the it's a, it's so, it's probably Act 51 of 1951, so that's the revenue sharing that we use for road money and things like that as well. Act 51 is pretty broad, but it talks about, it's your gas tax, it's your, things like that are part of Act 51 that the state collects and then distributes to municipalities in a variety of ways. One of them is transportation through organizations like SMART.
So the what will be on the ballot, what's being pushed on the ballot for November will change this, correct? Is that?
If adopted, it would impact SMART starting January 1st, 2023. And the SMART representative that I work with, Jenna and I talked to her a fair amount. She said she's had to come speak to us about what that looked like. Organizations like SMART and the Western Oakland County Transportation Authority and the Northern Oakland County Transportation Authority, among several others, would continue to exist. And the funding would go to them as well as SMART. So SMART would continue to operate, their funding and things would be impacted by that ballot question in November. I am far from an expert on that one, so.
The ballot question is going to be, it's a .95 county tax. And it's going to be flat. And it will take almost $600,000 out of Brandon Township, which we also contribute to. And in addition to that, we would also be funding this in the North Oakland County, and then the new millage that they're putting down, and it's for 10 years. And at any time during that 10 years, that can be renegotiated for another, well, we really need to do this for five, or we need to do it for, and that's how they keep things in perpetuity, you know, for, that's just how it's done.
But keep in mind, the agenda item is the contract for SMART.
It's important to know that.
That is a different item, which will be on your trustee comments, not under the agenda item for this contract.
Your county taxes?
Yes.
Yeah, it will be on the ballot.
This is
Any questions or comments on the item that we are on?
We all know that we're talking about the, Edna Burton Center Right, the trucks. Just so.
And that's not a
I mean, that's with the SMART, in case the people.
No matter what, the vote will end up being.
Just, just so people that are
Oh, it will.
That will be
It will.
More than welcome to bring up separate items in the trustee comments. This is about the current SMART contract that is in front of us, based on the current standards that we have. Any other questions or comments on this item? Are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Credit?
Okay.
That motion carries five one.
Was that yea or nay?
Thank you.
Nay.
That's why I double checked, I'm like, which way?
It's the air.
All right. Item number 13 is this, our closed session for this evening. At the request of the village manager, it's recommended that the village council of Ortonville convene in a closed section, a session under the Open Meetings Act, Act 267 of 1976, section 15.268, to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute. Specifically, the exemption under FOIA MCL 15.2431G to consider information or records subject to attorney-client privilege. At this time, we are looking for requests to go into closed session.
Make a motion to do I need to close our regular meeting? Or do we go into closed session?
By going into
Make a motion to go into closed session?
We have a motion by Trustee Nyval, supported by Trustee Dialis. Questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We will now convene over at the village office and enter into closed session, where we will finish the conversation, return here, and enter back into open session. All right, thank you, welcome back. We are looking to entertain a motion to go back into regular session at this time, please.
Motion to go back into regular session?
We have a motion on the table by Trustee Green, supported by Trustee Randazzo, to enter back into regular session. Any questions, comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and it is 9:28. Thank you very much.
I'll go real fast on that.
Um, do we need a synopsis discussion that we went into closed session, discussed the topic, and our agreeance as to our next steps?
Regarding the letter that is covered by attorney.
Thank you. All right. Next up on the agenda is item 14, which is our village manager's report, and I'll turn that over to Manager Madison, please.
Okay, real fast, Rebecca has the email I sent regarding the August 2 marijuana ordinance update. We've already discussed, covered questions on that one. Cool. Next one is Congresswoman Slotkin is coming to town tomorrow. She's having lunch with some cool people like Lieutenant Glover, Supervisor Rumble, Jason Jeremy Cracked. So you have the business owners.
Oh.
Yeah. So if you see him out about Smile Wave.
Not you?
Nope, I'm out of town.
Okay. Do you want to mention the cancellation of the first half of her announcement?
Not doing the event at Groveland, as previously scheduled. I can only imagine being a candidate means your schedule changes by the hour this time of year, so. Yeah. But she's still coming to town for lunch tomorrow. Questions?
There's no meeting from the village of Smile Council.
No. Matt and I are both out of town tomorrow.
You were invited, but
Correct. Yeah.
And I'm at work, and Jason will be representing and well-informed on everything.
Jason of the DDA in Brandon Township.
Yeah.
Sounds good. The grads who are involved, lots of things. Was, and I'm very pumped to visit, but
They requested business owners that were vested in, specifically.
Next up is bridge work, you guys saw it's done. It's open. Worked really closely with Row and Z contractors, we have not done our final walk. It hasn't been scheduled, it's either later this week or early next week for punch list items. Make sure it's all done.
What are they doing?
Already did them. Yep. Sidewalk on Mill, epoxy on Ball, and all this resurfacing on
Striping on the road?
Hasn't been scheduled yet. Bob and the crew did all the parking lot striping themselves, and the road is a little bigger than they want to do themselves.
What was the contract for the paper?
Painting was one of the things we negotiated about. We got an extra crosswalk taken out instead of, and some extra curving instead of
So that wasn't their responsibility?
It initially was, and we did some horse trading, and it wasn't. Yeah. But it's a, it's not a super expensive one. Oakland County paints, wouldn't be able to paint that for probably a thousand dollars.
Where?
They always come out once or twice a year, this way, and let us know when they're done. So we may put that out to bid and have a number for you at our next meeting, or we may have Oakland County do it, because they have road commission crews that paint all of them.
Oh.
Yeah.
Question? Are we sure that every nut, bolt, nook and cranny, I's dotted, T's crossed, everything was done exactly according to spec? Are we positive? I don't want another situation like Schoolhouse, or for that matter, you know, the other thing we were discussing. I don't want these things to crop up. So where you are, our point person, are you positive that every single thing is done exactly to spec?
I was, in some ways, I was a point person of Row as a project manager. And I talk to the project manager at least daily, usually three or four times a day.
Okay, but Row was project manager on the other. I'm sorry, I'm just going to put it out there.
On Schoolhouse.
On Schoolhouse. So I don't, I just, I know you're not an engineer, and Bob's not an engineer, and probably none of the other guys are engineers. But they need to sign something for a saying, we did everything according to spec.
I did give Row to provide us a letter. The issue with the milling on South Street. I did meet with them and their engineer, engineering team and bridge inspectors, some of whom inspected our bridges a bunch of times. And we met multiple times to make sure that the issues were addressed, they were addressed safely and correctly. And I have a letter stating as much in the file.
If something happened and the bridge collapsed, we can go back on them and say, hey, you signed this, you said it was done, you said it was done according to spec, and it was not. Okay, thank you very much. And at Ball Street, there's some, I was told, there's some plastic culverts that they were going to dig out, and it was put in the specs, and I want to make sure we get our money back out, because apparently it was a costly, you know, costly, I mean, everything's costly, but it was a little bit of money, so we would want to get that money back from
Put them in?
They did not do them.
Some of the work that we were originally calling for was taken out between Eagle, Water Resources, Commission. There's lots of oversight, you know, natural travel stream, so.
But we have all the documentation stating that, so that we're, so that you're clear, and that we're good on all that, okay. That's all I, thank you.
Any questions?
Next?
Next is, and I don't have, my favorite one, the road work that's happening on M-15 and thereabouts. Couple of detours in Groveland Township and in Brandon Township. Any questions on those? We've arrived them here, just so you are aware, make sure you share them, you don't get like alerts from the road commission. You could, they send a lot, but a lot's happening. Rose, any questions there?
Got the press release?
This is the press release. I will share the email before I go home.
It's on Facebook, it's on, it's on the township Facebook, it's on
It's on Facebook.
Yeah, it's on DJ Facebook, it's on
Yeah, but I like to have it in my bag.
And you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next up is training survey reminder, we already talked about it in recording. Next up is training survey reminder, we already talked about it, according to this email, uh, this afternoon to you and the DDA and Planning Commission as well, if you haven't done that survey, please do. Elizabeth is gonna make us a very good training plan, it's one of our RRC things. Any questions on that one? That's pretty straightforward, too. To add to training update, um, we were, uh, we just received today from the municipal league, uh, the request for delegates. If anyone is planning to go to their conference in late September in Muskegon, um, there is some business that could be done there. If you are planning to go, let us know. Um, we're supposed to do it by a resolution of who the voting delegate is and who the alternative is.
What are the topics? I mean, and and what is the cost?
I'll forward it to you, it is, it's not free. Uh, there's some cost to it, and it is on the other side of the state. Um, it's usually cost related for us to go to that one and some other ones. Uh, so I will, Jenna or I will share that with you, um, in the next day or two. But if you are going, let us know, because we could fill out the form and then make the resolution after, maybe retroactive September.
September, what year is September?
It's September twenty, twenty seven. Uh, and the other training update is, I applied for and received a scholarship to the ICMA, the International City County Managers Association. Uh, they have their international conference in Columbus, Ohio. I know, Columbus. Um, but I received a full scholarship for my registration and a travel stipend to attend, so the village will not be seeing any bills related to the ICMA conference. Um, it's the end of September, I'll be there for about four days with people from all over the world, learning about managing municipalities, so, um, yeah.
Ryan, are you gonna be here for September Fest? Or are you gonna leave before then?
Uh, we start the. Twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth. So I'll probably be here Saturday. And then drive to it. And obviously, you'll sell, you smell it. And then the last one in your packet is the Microsoft Office three sixty-five overview. Uh, as we've discussed, we voted in April or May, uh, to migrate our email services to Office three sixty-five as provided by IT Right. This is their information about it, what it does. Um, I learned this week that we currently have ten gigabyte, uh, email service each on our current plan, because mine is maxed out. Um, so mine went up to twenty-five gigs for a dollar more a month, um, but I made that decision myself. But you'll notice that with Office three sixty-five, everyone starts at a one hundred gig account.
Well, there you go.
Uh, so we will have a lot more storage, as discussed.
Maybe we won't have so many difficulties, I'm already having to put in all kinds of codes now to get my email all the time.
I hope it, and with that, there's also a one terabyte, um, amount of storage that has on the one drive, so we can store some of our stuff that's currently on our server there, uh, rather than, um, onsite on our server. So it's gonna, it's gonna help, it's a lot. It's a lot of you. So, uh, this is coming in September, early September, IT Right is gonna help us migrate our data um, and move email, so you will no longer be using IGD for email. Uh, more to come. They'll be onsite so they can walk you through it, help you make sure you get all your settings correct, put it on your phone if you want, all that good stuff. Um, but it's, it's coming for our next meeting, so stay tuned. You will have questions, uh, the two members that aren't here will definitely have questions. Uh, bring them to me, bring them to Jenna, we'd be happy to help.
And they will come here onsite and go through this with us?
Technically, it's September sixth and seventh is when they will be onsite.
Oh, September sixth.
So we will, we'll talk before then, um, we'll probably schedule, you know, are you coming this afternoon? You're around from two to three, and then Kay's coming three to four, and then Tony's coming four to five.
Planning Commission, right?
Everybody who has a village email, so Planning Commission as well as.
I'm wondering, because they do the whole group maybe, I mean.
Potentially, yeah, I'll talk about that, that's good. Probably.
Anything else offhand?
Talk about that, talk about those. Any other questions? I've already talked about payment margins, the number part of each basis, but we don't have to.
You'll get an email.
Right, I have a question on the, uh, computer stuff. There, okay, so the the emails that are, um, the ones that are on my computer right now, which is on the server, all that's going to be propagated over to the new stuff, so all that stuff should appear once we log in, but our logins will probably, our passwords are changed and all that.
Correct.
Um, can you ask, if you can, can you ask them if if I've set up private, not private, um, but, um, different file locations inside of the mail, you know, like I have.
Folders? Folders?
Yeah, folders. If those folders are gonna propagate, or should I pull those so I can convert them myself?
Uh, we'll know more about what we need to do ahead of time, as it gets.
So do you want us to email you questions and stuff so you're prepared for?
Thank you. As small ones.
Before it happens? That would be great. Any questions we have, please send them on over to Ryan, so he can be prepared for when they come. And I'm sure you'll have questions when you're onsite with them as well. Anything else you have?
No.
All right, thank you very much. We are moving on to public comment. At this time, it is on non-agenda items only. If you have anything to share with us on non-agenda items only, you have up to three minutes to talk. We can always count on Shelley. Is there anything, any any updates, anything to share, or any, no? Okay. We appreciate you. All right. The item sixteen on our list is the additional items from our trustees. At this time, you have, um, more than welcome chance to share things that you have on your list that you've been waiting for. And we will start with Tony, and we'll work backwards.
All right, um, well, additional items, um, on September twenty-fourth, uh, the Edna Burton Center is going to be having a craft show from nine AM to four PM. Uh, six-foot tables are twelve dollars, eight-foot tables are fifteen dollars, and tables and chairs will be supplied, obviously. Fay also mentioned that they're gonna have sloppy joes that day with chips, beverage, and dessert. Serving would be six dollars for that. Um, and, uh, um, like I said, again, the, um, oh, yeah, the twenty-fourth. Uh, I think that's the same time as September Fest, but they don't, they don't combine together, but feel free to stop up there, we'd love to see you. Oh, and if you do want to register, I'm sorry, uh, either call Fay or, um, email me, I can get you the info. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Melanie, please.
Um, no, I, I don't know what happened to trustee George, um, but I I wish he understood, and and I know that many of us have tried to explain to him about this marijuana, but I just, I need to put it on record that, no, I did not want it. Um, in fact, I was the one who made the noise about it when this all came down. I'm the one who FOIA'd the packets and tried to get the information to all of you. Um, so I don't understand where he's coming from, but he clearly does not understand what happened, and that concerns me. So I don't know if I should chat with him again. Um, so he understands, since he will be on the council again, uh, he under, he needs to understand how this worked and is going to work. And that's it.
Thank you. And let's see, BK, please.
Uh, again, I I just have concerns about September Fest, because I I don't know how it's gonna work, and I like to know how things are gonna work. And I I appreciate that you're gonna have a meeting, and hopefully, you know, maybe a joint meeting, because otherwise, I guess we'll just do everything on Saturday, and then what do we do on Sunday? You know, do we, we've gotta have a village council presence, there are people, these are presents.
There's brunch at Ball's on Sunday.
Brunch at the Ball's.
The vendors are all still downtown on Sunday. There's lots of things going on, but just keep in mind, this is a recreation department run item. The village has not, any involvement except the permit application, and if they invite us to do something. So this is, we are hands off, this is not our, our baby.
And we have events that, things that we do during that, but.
Like what?
The car.
If if they invite us to do that, we can't make the assumption, that's what I'm saying.
We, we select cars, and we get plaques.
If they choose to do that this year, we don't, we have not been invited, that's what I'm saying, we can't assume anything. They haven't asked us to do that yet.
Thirty years, they've done it. So I just, you know, be surprised if they did not.
I'll keep you there.
Okay, okay. I I just, you know, feel better if I if I knew what was, and they probably would too, I mean, we're gonna try it and see how it works, but.
A lot of things they're doing Sunday, too, but.
That's it, that's all. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yep, that's it.
All right. I feel like I'm missing someone. Keith, you have nothing? Okay. Um, nothing else I can think to add, um, so I think we're all set. Ryan, anything else you thought to add that you missed?
No.
All right, so what I'm looking for is item seventeen, which is a motion to observe, and we have a motion by trustee Nyvill, and that's supported by trustee Green. Any questions or comments at this time? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.